Yeah. I put in my password and it's not having.
Do you have a space between yours? Okay.
I have to take it to the tech department and they just tell me if it was not.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started and like to welcome everyone this evening. Thanks for showing up for this board meeting. At this time, we'll go ahead and take roll.
Johnson.
Here.
Mars.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ringer.
Here.
Sisti.
Here.
Zimmers.
Here.
That is six present.
Okay, 3.1. At this time, we're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna move on to 4.1, approval of the agenda. I recommend that the board approves the December 17th, 2018 agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Sisti.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
That is six I votes.
Okay, President's Report, 5.1. Public comments will occur during the public comments portion of the meeting. If you're interested in addressing the board, fill out the required public participation at board meetings form and submit it to Ms. Mitchell in the front row. Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll do board salutes and let's start this time with Mr. Ringer.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Mars.
Just for the high school seniors, or I'm sorry, for all high schoolers, it's finals week, so, you know, I'm sure my son is at home studying hard. Right?
You've gotta go lower down here to this wood, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, hopefully. Hockey is in full bloom. The Springfield Senators are three and four. They have a game on Thursday in Champagne, so please come out and support. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Last Friday, I did my favorite thing. It's probably about to be my least favorite thing. I'm trying to rule everything down. But that is to do the Christmas wrapping at DuBois Elementary School. It's always a lot of fun. You have a lot of conversations with the little people. And I think they brought in all the kindergarten girls at the same time. And, but they were very patient. They waited their turn. And there were some Christmas bags, you know, they all want it wrapped. They didn't want it to be put in the bag. And, you know, I had little Christmas, Santa Claus bags and things like that. Nope, they wanted the snowflakes or else the one with the red with the gold stars. So we had a great time and that's my favorite time of year, every year. I won't miss that as long as I'm on the board. It's more fun than a board meeting. And they beat you lunch.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of things. Superintendent Gill and I attended Urban League luncheon. Was that last week? I'm losing track of the time a week before.
Early last week.
Always a very nice event. Wonderful speaker, the national president of the Urban League was the guest speaker. Very inspirational. Also, last week, I did a visit to Springfield High last Friday and always a great visit. Dr. Liardi pretty much took me to every room in the building that was open. And all of a sudden, we went in and it weren't open, so we pretty much saw every classroom. The one good thing that I'm seeing, and I keep saying this when I'm visiting the high schools, I'm seeing more and more use of technology in the high schools. And Dr. Liardi had told me at the time when I was doing the tour that there were several teachers now that are writing grants and have one-on-one in their classroom, which is really great, because then they have it available for all the kids and they don't have to share them. And also, I was able to partake. There were 71 Illinois State Scholars this year at Springfield High, and they went on the roof of the building and took a picture with the Capitol in the backdrop, so that was really very nice. Other than being really cold that day, the kids were freezing, nobody thought to bring their coat outside, so.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Sisti.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the importance of some of our community partnerships. So we partnered with, I was kinda looking over some of the things that have happened in the last week, and I know Shoe Carnival actually had provided some of our students with shoes. The Telephone Pioneer Shoe Program worked with a couple of the different district schools to provide kids with shoes. There was also at Fairview, the Springfield Police, and I think it was Meyer and McDonald's, where they were able to go to lunch with the police and go pick out some new shoes. Green Family donated some coats. So we really appreciate these partnerships, because with, sometimes with a lack of social service agencies, with some of the funding being cut with social service agencies, it's nice to have these partnerships with some of these agencies and with, you know, some of the businesses to help us with these things, to help meet the social needs of some of our students. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. I also wanted to give a shout out to Lampier's Face PTO Group. They did this, I was on, I think it was Facebook, and they had listed something where they wanted parents and coaches and family members to send messages to their student while they were taking their finals for this week. So you could actually get in and type up a message, and they were being delivered this week to the students while they were taking their exams. I thought that was an amazing idea. So kudos to the Lampier Face and PTO team for that.
President.
Yes.
Quickly, I would like to commend all the basketball players at our high schools. We have three teams that are on the move and they're doing great things, so I think we commend the coaches and the students. And we hope and pray the students keep up their work so they can stay on the basketball court.
Oh, yeah. Zaire's even, I was there, I watched, I was there at that game. You're wearing the, it's a hard one.
Shout out to Chad.
Yeah. Hard fight.
Okay, if no one else has anything else, superintendent's gonna read something. We lost a longtime teacher in the past week and so she's never.
Yeah, I'd like to just take a moment of silence tonight for Mr. David Burgett. We lost him earlier this week, suddenly, unexpectedly. David graduated from Western Illinois University. He played football and graduated with a bachelor's in law enforcement and a bachelor's degree in special education. David was a special education teacher for 22 years at Douglas Alternative School, as well as a football and wrestling coach at Springfield High School. He had a strong passion for guiding and teaching youth, and I was able to spend some time and meet his family this past Saturday, as well as be with the Douglas family, not only at the school the day after, but also at the services. And it was just great to see all the support that was there. The police department came out in a big force, because so many of them work alongside our teachers at Douglas, and it's just a, it was a great, great showing of support for David, and I just wanna take a moment of silence for his family and the Douglas family as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. 6.1, old business. Any board members have any old business they'd like to discuss? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to 6.2, new business. Any board members have any new business they'd like to discuss? All righty, 6.3, student business. I know Zaire has a business, so you're on.
At first, I'd like to give a shout out to all the teachers that are putting in grades before our finals, because it helps the students out a lot. And I know technically, our grades aren't due until, but Thursday, and that's after finals, but the fact that they're getting them in early, so we kinda know our grade before going into it, is helping out a lot of kids. Now, for our last roundtable meeting, we actually were at the BOS Center, kinda got to feel where we're gonna put certain activities in our layout that we have this year. We have a little bit bigger space, so we're thinking about adding another group activity, so we'll stay tuned on that. And we're in the process of creating the design for the city tournament t-shirts this year. So we had a big, big battle out for the colors, so we have the colors selected, and now we're just finalizing the design and getting that sent out for the city tournament.
You gonna tell us the color?
Oh, that's a surprise. Come on.
Well, I hope it's not gray.
It's not gray.
They went with flair this year. I saw some flair.
Okay, thanks, Zaire. We have no presentations to the board this evening. We'll move on to 8.1, business report.
Mr. Vasco.
President Zimmers, members of the board. The district ended the month in November with a cash balance of $47.6 million in the bank for all funds. Earned interest for the month was $124,425, and interest earnings year-to-date are $539,326. And also, at the end of November, we had a total of $13.38 million in investments.
Any board members have any questions? Mr. Vasco.
Yes, with regards to the 13.3, that's pretty much our reserve fund. So where does this put us year-over-year from last year?
Well, this is, our reserve fund is kinda what is our year-end June 30th number
Okay.
that we use, and that figure is at $30 million.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, at this time, I would like to have a motion to adjourn and to public hearing on the tax levy report, so if I could have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Take a vote.
Johnson.
Aye.
Oops, I'm sorry, let me start over. I was on the wrong item. Mars.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Sisti.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
That is six I votes.
Okay, so we now will have a tax levy report from Mr. Vasco.
Okay, so tonight, we do our annual vote on approving the tax levy for the upcoming year, for the 2018 taxes payable in 2019. Just a little bit reminder, this money is for the operating funds of the district. It's our year-to-year, really every different area, staff, transportation, operations, and maintenance, all those different areas are paid through with this money. It's approximately half of our revenue for all of our funds across the board. So a little bit of reminder also on the Truth and Taxation Act, which requires us every year to estimate the number of dollars we expect to gain from the levy. If you remember, we did that at two board meetings ago in November. It must then be approved by the Board of Education prior to the last Tuesday of December. So this is our last opportunity in this month to approve it. The increase under the Truth and Taxation Law is, from year-to-year, the increase can be 5% or the Consumer Price Index number from the previous year. So for 2017, the Consumer Price Index number was 2.1%. So that's the maximum increase that we can have on current property from last year to this year. Then we also have a separate calculation that we can add in to capture new property. So for our total estimated increase for this year, the 2.1% plus the new property is 2.89%. That's under the 5% threshold, so legally, we're not required to have the public hearing, we're not required to put the notice in the newspaper, but we choose to do so annually anyway, just for transparency. So as I said, this year, the CPI is 2.1%. You can see the last three years, it was 2.1% last year, and then less than 1% the previous two years. Mr. Mars had asked me if it had ever been zero, and I did look up quickly, and it had never been zero. It was .1% in 2008, so.
Which we can understand.
Which we can understand. So average over the last 10 years has been about 1.8%. So last year's tax levy was $96.4 million. This year's Consumer Price Index is again is 2.1. The, so our estimated extension for budget purposes that we use this year is the 2.1% plus estimated $8 million in new property. Over the last few years, we've averaged between $8 and $10 million. The actual levy amount that we're asking for is $99.3 million, which is approximately another half a million dollars to account for if we do get more than the $8 million in new property. If we don't ask for that money, we don't, we don't get it. Our levy is lower. So, got a little cockeyed there, but you can see the figures, approximately 70% of our, the tax levy goes to the education fund, another $14 million to the Operations and Maintenance Fund, $5 million to transportation, and then $2 to $3 million for our other funds. And the impact on the average homeowner, if the value of their house was $100,000 last year and remains the same, the increase, our estimate will be approximately $29. That's a short summary. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Vasco.
I think it's important to be said that this levy goes to the operational fund.
Right.
Where the new monies that we're going to receive for the sales tax can only go to facilities improvements. This is how we operate on a regular basis, is through these seven funds, and that levy is then distributed amongst those seven funds.
Correct. Right, and the sales tax will be kept separate, will be totally taxed separate.
Doesn't even go on the rolls till July. We won't realize that money until next November. It's different than what we're talking about here. Being under tax caps, we follow the tax cap law to the T. That's all we ever, we ask for, and it is just the same as the Consumer Price Index. Other products go up, and the community costs and commodities that we utilize go up. This helps us stay with inflation, just like it does everything else.
Right.
So, we're, I mean, basically, what we're asking for is just to stay even with the CPI, so it's not necessarily, I mean, it will be an increase, but we're not asking for, I mean, we're just staying with the CPI.
Right.
Which is standard for any other taxing body, whether it be us or.
In any county in Illinois, which is most, that are under tax caps. Yes, we're limited by that Consumer Price Index number.
So it wouldn't not only be us, it would be like the Park District, things like that, any other, so we're not asking for anything any different? We're just following what the CPI is?
Right.
Thank you.
And I need to ask this time if there are any speakers in the audience in regards to this subject? Hearing none, we need to go back into our regular meeting, so I need a motion to do so. Hit a second.
Second.
And we'll take a vote.
Moore.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Sisti.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Those six I votes.
Okay, now 10.1, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'm gonna be brief. Thank you for giving a shout out to the Telephone Pioneers and Shoe Carnival. It has been in existence since 1950, so it has been around for a long time. In middle school, we had special thanks and a shout out to Pastor Paula and the staff at the Knox Church. They continued to provide for our students and staff at Jefferson Middle School. The church has partnered with Jefferson to provide gifts for students for more than 20 years, so thanks again for their generous donation, which consisted of books, snacks, board games, blankets, and much more. The students commented on how grateful and thankful and excited they were, and gave lots of hugs for their gifts. And also, the Beta Club at Franklin Middle School provided hats, scarves, and gloves to Matheny Withrow little buddies. The Franklin Falcons also wore personalized notes, encouraging notes for the students as well, and they are very grateful for their kindness in helping students that were younger than themselves and kinda giving back to the community. We had eight members of the Springfield High School varsity scholastic bowl travel to Winneka, Illinois, to participate in the new cheer tournament. The students competed against schools from across the state to prepare them for the winter and spring scholastic tournaments, and a shout out is to the Springfield Public Schools Foundation for helping them get the funds for the teams, that they could rent a van, and they did a great job at the tournament as well. I have been busy this week. I too went to one of the Christmas wrappings that Kathy Lim Sargeant does. She also does it over at Hazel Dell. I'd always been to the DuBois Day, so I went to Hazel Dell today and have the same feeling about the program as Board Member Johnson. She told me her brother-in-law has even started this gift of giving down in the St. Louis area. During my visit at Hazel Dell today, I got to be in each and every classroom. The principals like to take you to every room. It was great, but I got to meet a young man who's a fifth grader at Hazel Dell. His name is Evett Smith, and he actually has invented something that has gotten some nationwide recognition, and he is in the running, he's a top five candidate for something called My Dream Vention, and it could mean that he gets a lot of awards and some different things coming his way if he's the winner. So we need to go online and vote for him. That's the shout out tonight. So www.mydreamvention, so it's just D-R-E-A-M-V-E-N-T-I-O-N, so mydreamvention.com, and you can vote for his project. And so he explained to me today, he wears glasses like I do, and I'm new to it, so I do what he was talking about all the time, take it off to take a shower, take it off to do something, and then you can't find your glasses and you get in trouble, because you can't find your glasses. So he invented some different characters, like different superheroes that are actually kinda the size of the glasses. You put them on that, and you always know where to go look for them. And then you can also take it off and kinda hang it on the back of your bed, or you can hang it on the door if you're taking a shower. And so he just, it's a glasses-finding technique for kids, or maybe adults, that need that. So he was really excited about it. I was really, really enjoyed getting to meet him, and he's really wanting us to go out and vote for his project as much as we can. I think, is it once a day that you can vote? Yeah, so it's like one of those deals where you can vote once a day, kinda like the project that Zaire had earlier, you can get on and vote often and vote regular. So that was exciting. I've also been able to go to Wilcox and do a walkthrough for their literacy program. Of course, I was at Douglas a couple times this week. And then I also visited Lincoln Magnet today and did a social studies walkthrough, saw some pretty great stuff happening in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They're doing a lot of work with the National Geographic, and I got to see, actually, I was in Lane's room today, Lane Zimmer is a teacher, and I think she's in seventh grade, right? Sixth grade. And they were actually going on and doing, like, looking overseas through satellite to see different landscapes and different things that they were studying in class, so it was pretty amazing. Just really happy with what I saw there. And at Wilcox with the literacy visit, and also at Hazel Dell today, I see our literacy program live in a while, and just all the work that the teachers have done to kinda rethink how they're doing that. And we already did a little bit of a shout out for city tournament, but 16th, 17th, and 18th, that is a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in January, where last night is Friday night this year, due to some scheduling issues at the BOS Center, and that's the night we're gonna do our unity night. So after school, we'll have our unity night. We're looking forward to that. And then just a couple weeks later is the girls' city tournament, January 23rd through 26th, and it's gonna be hosted at SHG this year. So looking forward to Christmas break, that's Thursday. At the end of the day, students get out an hour early, as well as staff, and we, teachers return on the second, and students return on January 3rd. So I wanna wish everybody a happy holidays, including the board. Thank you for all of your support, and just looking forward to having a nice break, and I know the high school students are welcome, liking this finals before, so that you don't have to worry about that over break. Is there?
Very nice.
Any questions, Superintendent Gill, before we move on? Hearing none, we'll move on to consent action items. Superintendent Gill.
President Zimmers and members of the board, I recommend approval of consent action items 11.2 through 11.8, as described in the corresponding resolutions.
So moved.
Give a second. Any discussion?
Question for Superintendent with regards to 11.7 and 11.8. Are those, are those new or are those continuing programs?
These two are new, but they are replacing a similar program that we've had for several years. Our current program, as I outlined in the bulletin, is no longer really working with school districts and changing their platforms, and so we needed to look for a change. So back in July, we kind of issued to all the companies in this area requests for their services, and we vetted those, and even went and visited other school districts to see how they're working. So it's replacing something that we already have in place. It's the same type of program, but we're excited about the opportunities that these programs have to offer, especially in connection with our HR department.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing nothing else, we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Ringer.
Aye.
Sisti.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
That is six I votes.
Now, roll call, action items. 12.1, personnel.
Mrs. Sherman.
President Zimmers and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the personnel recommendations as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Sisti.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
That is six I votes.
Okay, 12.2, acceptance of the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Vasco has to read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
President Zimmers, members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education accepts the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2018 as presented.
So moved.
I'll still second.
Aye. Any discussion?
Yeah, so the unfunded pension obligation?
That was.
I know, they restated.
Yes.
So where did they actually put that? It's not in the ed fund. Did it go into IMRA, Social Security? Where did that end up at?
Went through the government life, my statements were reversed, statements were in the.
Okay, so it didn't touch any of the individual funds, per se?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vasco.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Sisti.
Aye.
That is six I votes.
Okay, 12.3.
Mr. Vasco.
President Zimmers, members of the board, the superintendent recommends approval of the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Springfield School District Number 186, County of Sangamon, State of Illinois, that the amounts of money as set forth on the certificate of tax levy attached heretofore and made a part hereof shall be raised by special tax for the next ensuing year for the purpose set forth on said certificate of tax levy. The president and secretary are hereby authorized and directed to sign such certificate of tax levy and file such certificate with the County Board of Sangamon County on or before the last Tuesday in December of this year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question before you move on.
Sure.
Let's see, am I doing this? So that third resolution would be the combination of the first year?
The third resolution is for, the resolution we just approved was for, was for operations and maintenance, education, transportation, and tour.
Okay, but when you were discussing the CPI, now that's, are all of these part of that same CPI?
Yes, all of these are part of that, yes.
Yes.
There's two separate resolutions for all of the funds that are effective.
Okay.
And once again, just to reiterate, I mean, the CPI for this year is gonna be 2.1?
For 2017, it was 2.1.
And for, we don't know the CPI.
We don't know the 2018 yet. It was 2.2 at the end of November.
2.2 at the end of November.
This past November, so.
But we used last year's CPI for this coming year, so...
Right.
We'll have to wait until next year to worry about this year.
We'll know, middle of January, what are next year numbers.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Sisti?
Aye.
Zimmer's?
Aye.
That is six aye votes.
Okay, twelve point four.
Mr. Vasco?
President Zimmer, and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education, Springfield School District Number One Eighty-Six, County of Sangamon, and State of Illinois, that for the ensuing year, the County Clerk of Sangamon County is hereby authorized and directed to extend the following special taxes on behalf of Springfield School District Number One Eighty-Six. The sum of two million eight hundred, eight hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars to be levied as a special tax for municipal retirement purposes; the sum of two million nine hundred and six thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to be levied as a special tax for Social Security Medicare purposes; and the sum of two million one hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and forty to be levied as a special tax for special education purposes.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, questions?
And the special levy, is this something that we do on a yearly basis, or is this something that's a one-time occurrence for this year?
No, it's, it's the same yearly basis as, as the other tax levies.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Mars?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Sisti?
Aye.
Zimmer's?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
That is six aye votes.
Okay, twelve point five?
Mr. Vasco?
President Zimmer, and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the resolution amending the 2014 B bond levy as attached.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Moore?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Sisti?
Aye.
Zimmer's?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
That is six aye votes.
Okay, twelve point six, student discipline.
President Zimmer, and members of the board, it is my recommendation that two eighth-grade students be hereby expelled from further attendance at Grant Middle School through the end of the eighteen, nineteen school year with a program.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Ringer?
Aye.
Sisti?
I'm going to vote present.
Zimmer's?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
That is five aye votes and one present.
Okay, at this time, we do have public participation, but I'd like to ask, Ms. Rebecca and Josh, is it Hiram? Okay, you want to come to the podium? They're parents of a Springfield High student. And I should, should say before we get started, we usually limit this to three minutes, so...
Okay. Sure. The timer will be up there for you, so you know. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Irvin. This is my husband, Joshua. We are the parents of a high school student at Springfield High School. Our, so that's our affiliation. My concern here is about bullying. My son has been involved with bullying since school started, to the point of attempted suicide. He's been hospitalized for it. He returned back to school, and this happened in September. We spoke with the school's social worker, and also the social worker outside of school. And recently, on twelve eleven, this particular bully continued to harass my son. He started in the morning with stomping on his shoes. It proceeded with a taunting and jarring at him throughout the whole entire day. During PE class, the boy confronted my son with plenty of eyewitnesses that saw this, and I have text messages and everything. This child called my son a B word and continued with derogatory words. My son turned away and walked from him, and he said, "That's right, you walk away because you're nothing but a B, and you're nothing but a..." Some more derogatory words, just like your mother. My son turned around at this kid and said, "What did you say to me?" He's tired of this. They fought. And my son, against everyone's idea and imagination, actually ended up beating up, if you will, the child. My son is expelled until January eighth. The other child received one day in-house. One day. That's it. My concern is that, how are we going to address this? How are we going to deal with this in the future when my son returns? There's nothing but text messages, after text messages, that my son is being threatened to be jumped by the football team of Springfield High School, that they're going to find him, and they're going to beat him bloody. I'm his parent, I'm his mom. How do I send him back to a school that is threatening to cause bodily injury and harm to my child? What am I to do? I'm lost. I have been studying email after email. I've been calling, leaving voice messages to whomever I can. I've received zero back, zero reply via email or phone call. Nothing is happening, nothing is being resolved. I just wanted to be able to talk to somebody, to express the concern and the hurt in my heart.
We feel like we're kind of on our own. We, we can't imagine that we'd be dealing with this. So, we were looking towards the school and the staff of the school to help us with this